Okay. I'd like to call the order, the zoning commission regular meeting for Monday, October 1st, 2018. First order of business is the appointment of alternates and we'll appoint Joe in place of Dave Ryan. And first order is, second order is approval of the minutes of September 17th.
Kevin, I had a couple of minor corrections to offer on minutes of the 17th. The first is on item 209, line item 209, or line 209. There's an extra word. The third word on that line is the word was, and that just needs to be stricken. It doesn't fit there. And then on line 289, on the first line, or the, yeah, I'm confusing myself. On 289, Grove Property is on 209, 289. And it says Grover. There's an R on the end. Yeah, it's Grove. And last one is on 367. Right after, yeah. Motion, motion at, add, application. The at should be a two, T-O. Motion two. Well, wait a minute.
Yeah, motion to add application.
Yeah, to add, right. Yeah, okay. Those are my suggestions, and I wouldn't move approval with those.
Bruce found mine. That was the only one. I had 367 and maybe others. Bruce, you are the Hawkeye as usual.
Okay. All in favor with the amendments here?
I have too much time.
Okay. As far as public hearings, application 1838 of Thomas Evans and Christopher Smith. The applicant has asked to table that until 10:15. So do we need a vote to table it?
So you'd have to take a motion to table it because also, application 1849 was advertised for this evening, so we'll have to open it and table that application.
Okay.
So you could do 1838 first. You should table it because you have an open public hearing that you tabled for this evening.
I want to make a motion to table.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we table the application 18-38 to our next meeting until the 15th.
Second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Doyle, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Next application, we need another motion to table this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to table application 18-49 until our next scheduled meeting on October 15th, 2018.
Second?
I'll second it.
Kim, you got those names? It's Joe and Mike. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all business. Application 1838. We just tabled the hearing on this one, so.
You don't have to take action. You still have an open public hearing on these.
Okay.
See, there's no action required.
No action required on this one. The applicant's not here.
Applicant is not here. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that maybe we go through the rest of the agenda and call, see if the applicant shows up. But you have a staff report from Robin Newton from the last meeting identifying some deficiencies with this application. These have, these issues have not been resolved yet. So unless the applicant will be providing revised drawings tonight, staff would recommend that you table the action on this.
Mike, is this the one we're waiting for something from the Health Department or some other thing?
Yes, and also we're looking for a screen, fencing around the dumpster. They just have a plan for a pad with no, no screening around it. So this pad is visible from Iron Horse Boulevard. I'm not aware that they're proposing any fencing around it. And one of the questions I've asked the Health Department is whether the public health code also requires fencing around dumpster enclosures in order to contain refuse, et cetera, not just from a instead screening perspective, which I have not received confirmation from the Health District yet.
So at this point, we just defer this one, or do we just?
We defer this later in the evening and give Mr. Cannelli a chance to possibly show up.
Okay. And then, item C is application 1846. No action is needed here. We got a public hearing scheduled for November 19th. Application 1847 of Chris Millar. Expect to get to you soon.
He likes it.
I'm glad we came on time today. Do you guys have copies of any of the drawings, or?
Do.
Okay. I have, you know, some large scales here on these things.
Of course, when you get ready, if you introduce yourself, students.
So I'm Chris Millar of Phase Zero Design, here on behalf of Grove Property Fund. You know what, presenting tonight is facade renovation for the existing Fitzgerald's Food, Fitzgerald's Foods over at Drake Hill Mall. Right now, from the images, I'm sure you're all probably familiar with it, there's an existing three arches in front of Fitzgerald's Foods, and it has a metal roof over the top of that. And then, of course, their sign on top of the metal roofing. What we're looking to do is basically remove that metal roofing, build the parapet up a little bit taller than it is currently, and also remove the arched windows and fill those with larger windows to bring light into the store and just, really just bring more light into the store. These images down here, this one is just what the existing facade looks like at the other end of the building, just giving you some context to make you aware of how tall that existing two-story piece is. You know, we're going to jump to the rendering, so we'll go back to this if we need to. So, as I mentioned, we're opening up those three archways that are there, making it a little taller, squaring them off, providing some type of, or a metal awning over the windows, again, to kind of screen us on a little bit, but still allow the light in, and creating a new large canopy entry over the entrance into the building. We're really keeping materials similar to what's there now by adding a little bit more, you know, some different materials at the same time. The brick that we're showing is new brick to match the existing building. Doing a new stone water table. We were thinking it would be a brownstone, which is very traditional with, seems very... And then, up above, this would be an aluminum wood veneer to extend the building up a little higher to match up with the parapet that's beyond. The entry, actually, let me back up. The building footprint stays exactly the same. There's no square footage addition, with the exception of the canopy that we're adding over the front entry. Currently, the sidewalk sticks out in front of the building, probably 15, 15 feet or so. So we're going to come off a few feet with two new columns to support the canopy entry that we're proposing. And you can see that a little bit on, if you go back to this black and white rendering. These are the two new columns that we're adding in front of the entry door. And then, this line in front of that is the existing sidewalk. So there's still, you know, ample room for people to obviously walk in front of the building.
Could you say that again? Which line is the existing sidewalk?
This, this line that's right at the bottom, it kind of tapers, tapers up a little bit. That's the existing concrete curb line.
Oh, okay, got it.
So our two new columns are four feet clear of the existing building. So the front face of it is, we have it at seven foot four here. And then, there's, there's another, at least 10 feet in front of that to the curb line.
And how far does the roof actually go up to?
The roof is actually this dashed line that we're showing here. So it's probably to the front peak. I'm going to guess it's around nine feet or so.
Is that going to be guttered, or?
Yeah, we would have a gutter on that. Most likely, if we do have gutters, we'd probably bring them down the sides of the columns on each side, try to keep them away from the front. The roof, the structure is all metal. We're looking to have an exposed, you know, exposed steel system, it may be painted. And what's really not depicted in the renderings is lighting. We're thinking of some type of pendant lighting in there, or lighting that kind of uplifts that structure, you know, shore off.
It's a metal roof?
Metal roof.
Any concern with snow dumping on people?
It's not a huge roof, so, you know, from the, from the peak to the edge, it's, it's really small slope.
Yeah, but that snow will come over that one.
We would certainly introduce snow guards on there to prevent it from splashing down on the sidewalk.
Are there some sort of design guidelines for that? I'm thinking about, for everyone who's been there, you know sometimes it's worth your life to step off the curb because people come by there, even though there are the traffic slowdown humps in the asphalt going back towards Drake Hill Road. But my question is, you know, I, you know, I don't see any proposal to do anything more to slow down traffic, you know, right in front there. So I'm just curious as to whether the setback from the existing curb to wherever it's measured from the building, and now it's going to be eight feet smaller, or nine feet smaller. Is there a guideline that you're trying to ensure that you're in sync with a minimum guideline from the structure? Now it's the two columns to the driveway, because as people walk around, they can step out and a driver won't see them if they're standing on one side and all of a sudden surprised there's someone stepping out. And if they're running a little too fast, we may have an incident there. But my question, you're a designer, is there a prescribed standard for distance building to the?
As far as code-wise, there's no standard that I'm familiar with.
Okay.
You know, obviously, a buffer is a good idea. I think the buffer that we were left with after we put the columns in is still pretty substantial. Elsewhere in the center, and even elsewhere in the town, you know, that buffer's a lot smaller. A lot of times that buffer is just the width of whatever the, you know, four or five-foot sidewalk. So we're left with, of course, to 10 feet in front of that, those columns. And I just have one more rendering, too, to show you, which is just kind of a straight-on view of Fitzgerald's. The Peach Wave, we're not doing any work to, but again, I just wanted to show that in comparison to the facade that we're proposing. I'm not doing anything too drastic to alienate the rest of the center. In fact, there's a lot of steel that is exposed on the other half of the building. Underneath the canopy, there's steel columns, some decorative elements at the top of it, which I think the proposed design that we're showing here is, is in the same character as that.
Looks like a nice update.
And you said it doesn't add anything to the square footage of the building?
It does not. It does not. Just, you know, if you're looking at the overhang, the overhang does add square footage, but the, the building footprint, the usable square footage does, is not increased.
Chris, you said the light under the roof is not included, but you do, you are including the other lights that are on the pillars?
Yeah, there, there is some lights shown here. To be honest, I think the, the final design for those lights still has to be different. We know that there can't be any uplighting, it's, it's going to be strictly downlighting. But, you know, I don't know if they're just going to be cans, if they're going to be a little more decorative than that.
Is there any other use in Plaza? Any other, any other lights?
Oh, light, any other?
Like this Peach Wave having, I see Peach Wave has lighting over their sign.
Yeah, there's some goosenecks here, I believe, over their sign. Everything is set back underneath the canopy, and I think there's some strip lights over the signage there. So there's nothing very decorative, unless, if... There's, there's really no lights on the existing, the corner by CVS either. So there's really nothing to match up with.
So did DRB not address this?
DRB actually gave a favorable recommendation as submitted.
All right, so they approve?
They approved it.
The can lights?
Mm-hmm.
And we do know we're coming back for signage for the building. There's no signage included. Obviously, we just took the Fitzgerald's name and put it on the front. Most likely, that's what it's going to be, but there's a signage package that will need to be sent.
Okay, the signage is part of this, because you're saying we're not approving the signage?
It was not included on the...
This is just the facade work. In discussions with the property manager, I don't speak for Mr. Walker, but they were planning on coming back with a signed package after this application for the Plaza. Is it correct?
Yeah, correct.
So you're just looking at the improvements to the facade, the new entryway, et cetera. Signage will be coming in at a later date.
And the only, the only reason why I mentioned the lights is we put some fixtures on the front, which I think that's exactly where all the fixtures need to be. I'm just not entirely positive that the fixtures shown are the decoration, or ornamental style that we want to show. The cans is kind of a very older, traditional style, it's an decorative, decorative sponsor and laser credit. But more importantly is, is we know that this, the canopy area needs lighting as well. So, yeah, I mentioned the signage because I assumed if, if we need to come back to lighting, we could come back and address lighting and signage at the same time.
Any other questions?
No, just good design.
We do have a recommended motion here, if anyone wants to make that.
Shall I make a motion?
Well, at this point, should we make it clear that signage and lighting is separate?
You can add lighting to that.
Just make that bullet number three on the motion. Or just tagging into two.
Two has, yeah, the same. Okay, Jackie, you up?
Okay. I make a motion to approve application 18-47 for a site plan amendment for changes to the Fitzgerald's facade on the property located at 710 Hop Meadow Street. The site plan amendment approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. One, an administrative zoning compliance permit is required for work. And two, approval is only for facade work. Changes to signage and lighting require separate approval.
I'll second that.
Mike. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Just a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant for 1844 is present.
Oh, okay.
Your relation, your presentation. You can amend the agenda to hear his application.
Okay. You just made that motion to amend the agenda to hear applicant 1844 in a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll take up 1844. If you just state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is John Cannelli. I'm here as the agent of the applicant. Address is 196 Trumbull Street, Suite 508, Hartford, Connecticut, from the firm Cannelli and Associates. We are here today making application for a site plan amendment consisting of the installation of a concrete pad in the rear of four, to the side, really, of four railroad street, which you may better know as Plan B Burger Bar. Purpose of the pad is to provide a seat, as it would, for our dumpster. There is presently, it's crushed gravel that is on the ground, that will be replaced with this. This is a conversation that kind of started with the Department of Health, the Valley, Department of Health, they, something they encouraged, did not say absolutely forcing us to do it with anything, but they said it would be something that would make them very happy. So it's a pretty minor change to the site plan. It is obviously critical because of the historic nature of the buildings in the area and the zone. There is existing fencing around the, the spot that is on the, on the plants. That is standard stockade wooden fencing, painted barnyard red, which is the same color as the trim of our building at Plan B, which is, as you may know, the old railroad station.
The applicant just provided revised drawings to clarify what he was describing to you.
There's a, a better detail of, not cloud, but a, pulls out into the top right-hand corner to show you what we're applying for.
Okay, so you're planning to use the existing fence?
Yep.
Existing stockade fence behind the dumpster.
The fencing provides blocking of anything to railroad or to Iron Horse.
You don't have to have any pictures because I'm thinking it doesn't block it very well currently.
I just, I actually walked around it before I got here. I actually took a few photos, I showed it to staff. The fencing's taller than me, I'm just shy six feet tall.
When you drive up Phelps Lane, you pretty much see the...
If you're driving on Phelps, which, which runs north, south?
It's the north.
Sorry, sorry, east, west. Yes, that side of it is exposed, but we do have, there's a photo I have of the gate portion of it that's opened into the feet, into the space. That can be opened and utilized. There is a gate there that would block it from Phelps. We haven't been utilizing it.
Yeah, okay. I'd agree with that.
Yeah, but there is fully, there's fencing taller than me that blocks it from Iron Horse and from railroad.
And, nowhere are the, are you aware of the other, the staff memo from Robin?
Yeah, saying that there was no fencing, fencing planned. That was the only thing I saw.
Yeah, the only other issue was that we were looking to follow up from the Health District on this one, just to confirm that the pad and location met their request of Mr. Cannelli. We did not receive that.
I do have a confirmation sheet from a fax that I sent that shows this application was sent to Fire Marshal Inland and Wetland and to the Health Department. I don't think, we're not in the buffer zone, we're not in inland and wetlands, so I don't think they have as much jurisdiction. It's a concrete pad outdoors, so I don't think the Fire Marshal cares. And this is actually at the strong recommendation of the Health, the Farmington Valley Health Department thought that this was something we should really do. And we did send it to them, I never heard comment from them, and, oh, as another housekeeping matter, the staff would like, yeah, this was placed, according to the public notice, was placed in accordance.
Mr. Chairman, the staff would make the recommendation. The commission's comfortable in granting, if they'd like to grant approval for this. Staff would offer you a condition that issuance of a zoning permit will require a sign-off from the Farmington Valley Health District, and that gates be modified so that they close and provide screening from, to the dumpster pad from Phelps Lane.
No problem.
That way, we can speed up the matter of resolution with the Health District. If the commission's okay with that.
Another just housekeeping matter. I'm going to approach staff and hand them confirmation receipts to all three of the departments I just listed, stating, showing that I did give notice on September 6th to the, the last hearing, where then this was continued till today's date, October 1st. So, and I haven't, and I know the gentleman over there that has jurisdiction on Plan B, and he feels very comfortable in calling me if he has any issue.
Okay. Have we, on this side of the room, the?
Yeah, everyone down. Go on it back, here you go.
I will read it.
You're going to need it, this gentleman on the left.
Yes.
All right. Do we have any other questions?
Everyone down, Joe. Concrete pad, was it screening?
Was it screening? And a door. Yes, working. All right, someone want to make a motion then? Momentary delay here.
Not a problem. I, yeah, I've spent a lot of my life in these hearings, and seeing midnight is a normal thing, so I'm perfectly fine.
We're not going that late.
You're going to do it?
You can do it. There's a lot of...
Yeah. Sorry, I just want to get the verbiage right. That's okay, hopefully.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, approve application 1844 of B Fair Property LLC for a site plan amendment to add a dumpster pad to the property with the following conditions: that a zoning permit is required, and two, no zoning permit to be issued until written approval from the Farmington Valley Health District, and three, a gate to be repaired, replaced in order to provide adequate screening of the pad from Phelps.
Laid. You got a second?
Yeah.
Mike and Jackie. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can it's unanimous? And that, you're not opposed? Okay.
Mr. Clinton, your assistance?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Okay, now we can speed through some of this. Item E is the application 1849, 49, and we have a public hearing already tabled to October 18th, so no action is necessary then.
October 15th.
Okay, October 15th. Clutch your mic.
Mr. Chairman, the, the next application, however, you will have to table, that is the site plan amendment, which is just the administrative review for the changing use for the property. The others are all the public hearings, which you've already...
Okay, so we need a motion to table application 1850.
So moved.
That's Mike and Joe?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, done, approved unanimously. Okay, application 1851, is this guy here?
Yeah. This, the next three applications are all scheduled for public hearings. We've already scheduled the hearings, you do not have to take action on tabling each one. You've already scheduled hearings, and referrals are out on 1851 and 1852.
Okay, so we can skip down to?
New.
New.
New business. Application 1854 of Ryan Krieger.
Did we skip 53? It's already been scheduled.
It's already been scheduled, okay.
So yes.
All right, so I want to be clear.
We do not take action on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, application 1851, this was presented to the Design Review Board this evening. They gave a favorable...
53, 54?
1854, apologize. They gave a favorable recommendation on this application. It's for a replacement of signage. It was previously where the Attilio's Restaurant is. They're just changing the name to Wing Bear. The sign matches the size that was there for the Attilio's Restaurant. Staff recommends approval on this.
Okay.
Because the applicant provided more details this afternoon on the new sign, which is attached to my staff report. Recommend approval for this. This, along with the item that's later this evening, is similar signage. Under your regs, normally would fall under consent items...
Under your regs, normally would fall under consent items, consent items for the agenda. In the future, I'll talk with Dave about this, I'm going to follow the regs, and we're putting these forward as consent items. It's in your regs, it's in the applicant's benefit. These are just really minor in nature. So we'll be following the center code now. But in this one, because it's, right now, there are applications before you had asked that you recommend an approval for it.
Okay, so a motion to approve application eighteen fifty-four?
I make a motion.
All right, Jackie made a motion, second from Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Do I need, but there's conditions.
Too slow?
Yeah, yeah, there's conditions on this one, just because it was an application.
You can amend it, okay, they're a little late, but yeah.
Kevin. I make a motion to approve application eighteen fifty-four for a signed permit for the Wing Bear on the property located at seven seventy-five Hot Meadow Street. The signed permit approval is subject to the following conditions of the approval. Number one, an administrative zoning compliance permit is required for the installation of the sign. And number two, the sign is the exact replacement of Attilio's sign. Changes to size or illumination require approval by the zoning commission.
Joe, you accept that?
Yes.
Give me a second, okay. Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now it's officially approved. Okay, new business, application of new, receipt of new applications. Actually, we did that one already.
Mr. Chairman, your next application, eighteen fifty-five, the library missed, we're trying to submit this fifteen days prior to the date so they can put their sign up, we missed it by a few days. So they have the public information to sign up, this is a site plan amendment, as per the code. However, just for the record, Design Review discussed this, this application this evening, and actually issued a favorable recommendation. Tony Piazza will be at your next meeting to discuss the application, so I'd ask that you table this for, to the, to October fifteenth.
A motion table?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table application eighteen dash fifty-five to our next scheduled meeting on October fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Second.
So Joe and Jackie. She's breaking Kim in.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Make it a little easier for her. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, application eighteen fifty-six, we already have the public hearing here scheduled.
So, Mr. Chairman, as part of the, all the reviews of the one thirty-two Hot Meadow Street applications, all four of them, it was determined that a lot of coverage, special exception is required. We were able to note, to notice this in the Hartford Current for the fifteenth, so we'd ask that you schedule a public hearing for the next meeting for this application?
So we need to schedule a public hearing. Okay, a motion to schedule a public hearing?
I move we schedule a public hearing for application eighteen dash fifty-six at our next meeting, was it?
October fifteenth.
At our next scheduled meeting of October fifteenth, twenty eighteen.
I'll second it. So, Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have a request to add an item to the agenda, it's application eighteen fifty-seven. Florrie Wagner, hello, Hello Lovely Agent. So do we have a motion to amend the agenda to include this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the agenda to include application eighteen fifty-seven.
You have a second?
Second.
Mike and Jackie? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved, so application eighteen fifty-seven, and this is another one that just Mike just mentioned.
This is a very simple sign replacement, so it's the old Studio Gallery. They're looking, Hello Lovely, which is over on the Maple Tree Plaza, looking to relocate to this, to the tenant space. There should be in your packet, a copy of the signed package. It's actually a reduction of signs, because they're going to take, the two canopies at the front entrance have logos on them, so they're actually going to take those off, so it will just have their name on it, and the main entrance will have the sign. So staff recommends approval for this one. There's one other thing to discuss, just to make, bring to the commission's attention. You may recall, probably about eighteen months ago, there was an application by the owner at the time where they wanted to retain a light that they installed underneath the canopy. That light is to be removed, Steve Walker is committed to removing it. So the lighting issue with the eternally lit sign will be going away. Their application does not call for transparent letters that would benefit from that light, so it was determined by all the parties just remove the light. I did a quick staff report with some recommended approvals, but in the future, on these simple applications, as I said earlier, they fall under your regs as consent item, you'll start seeing that on your agenda now. And I'll work with the chairman pursuant to how the code is written for that.
And that's a benefit to the business in town, speeds up the process for them. It's great.
Well, as a reminder, that there's a complete description on how the consent agenda works in the bylaws for the commission, and they're in the Dropbox, the bylaws for this commission. You look in there, run it through, you see the description.
And I'll, I'll talk to Dave when he gets back, and then maybe I'll do a memorandum to the board and just kind of say, these are the type of applications that will fall under consent items, and this is what you'll start seeing staff present to you, if that's okay with the commission.
Fantastic, that's good. So because this didn't do that, we're going to need a quick, a quick motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because we do not.
Well, that's, we need to, I don't want to wear this out, but we want to make sure that we're committed to the discipline that's described in the, okay? Because you don't bring things into a meeting that haven't been, they have to have been distributed before this. I'm interrupting. Please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application eighteen dash fifty-seven for signage for Hello Lovely on the awnings, on the Cannon Building on the property located at seven twenty Hot Meadow Street. The signed permit approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the administrative zoning compliance permit is required for installation of new signage. Two, any changes such as addition of lighting or size of the total signs requires approval from the zoning commission.
Okay, second from someone, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved unanimously, again. All right, general commission business correspondence?
Actually, just one point of interest, I attended a discovery meeting for FEMA last week. They are starting a map revision project for the flood insurance maps. A draft map will be out in two thousand and nineteen for, they're shooting for an effective date to two thousand and twenty-one. They will be re-studying the Farmington River, Hop Brook, Nod Brook, and possibly Stratton Brook. So we'll be getting revised maps and insurance studies that have, will have new engineering data behind the determination of the flood plains and survey data for sites. So it's a big project, and since you are the board responsible for administering the National Flood Insurance Program, I just want you to be aware of it. It'll start getting press, and people may ask you questions about it. It's still in the preliminary stages.
It's great.
I have the map in my office, if anyone's interested in the scope of the project, that delineates what's important, what's not.
Okay, the next item is, we have a request from the town manager to have a liaison from the zoning commission to, as an ex officio member of the Economic Development Commission, this is the new commission that they've created. So do we have someone interested in doing this?
I'd be happy to.
Anyone want to argue that?
No, most excellent.
Thank you.
Bruce, want to do that? No?
Exactly, wish I will.
Do we actually need to make a vote here, or can we just designate you? I guess...
The chairman can just make the designation.
Yeah, the chairman can make the designation.
All right, well, we designate Jackie as the representative from the, from the zoning commission. Thank you, Jackie.
Yeah, Jackie.
You made it easy. All right, the next item is the proposed regular meeting schedule for the year twenty nineteen.
So staff looked at possible other dates during the week to... It's tricky, because we meet every two weeks, so we run into conflict with some other commission. We're kind of locked in on Mondays, unfortunately. Design Review approved their meeting schedule for two thousand and nineteen, we're still taking the month of August off. They kind of said that if the zoning commission wants to have a meeting, then they would amend their schedule to have anything in August. And it's just a question, it's a common complaint that my office receives from applicants when they look at the schedule, but I'm not asking you to, to change it.
But that's also as needed, like, we've had extra meetings for sure, if there's, if there's items.
Schedule a special meeting.
Right.
Yeah, it just, I mean, if we have something that comes through the pipes that requires action by the commission, very likely staff's going to reach out to you and have a special meeting.
Yeah, because it just looks like sixty days between July fifteenth and August fifteenth.
Yeah.
September.
Yeah.
September, thank you.
Yeah.
Your math wasn't working.
All right, so are we okay with this?
I would move to approve.
All right, second?
The meeting dates for two thousand and nineteen.
All right, Jackie and Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any update on the zoning regulations amendments?
So we're working on, we have cross-references that we need to address in that draft document that we shared with you. Because there's, there's areas where we're referring to other sections, we're not complete, we're still working on that. That's the tricky part, and we're also trying to cut back a few, now, ten, twenty more pages. I know that the chairman wanted to discuss accessory, oh, I'm sorry, Airbnb, the next meeting. Maybe we may have a draft for you, just to discuss what a regulation could look like on regulating such things.
All right, then, just going to make my motion. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Kevin.
Not your fastest one, Mr. Chairman.